...which we live, work, and play. You have entrusted us as stewards of our beloved city of Nacogdoches. Please guide our hearts and minds as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. Remind us that we are not only elected city leaders, but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good for all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beautiful city of Nacogdoches. Amen.
So I'd now like to call the meeting of May 21st, 2019, to order, and we will start with our open forum. As a reminder, the open forum is the public's opportunity to address counsel on any matter related to the city that is not on the agenda. Our rules and procedures for council meetings apply to the open forum and include disrupting the public meeting is a violation of state law, and no cursing is allowed. Your comments are limited to three minutes. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. The first person we have that signed up is Mary Ann Bentley. If you'd like to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Mayor Brophy and City Council. Today, I'm bringing you thoughts from our late Archie P. McDonald, a wonderful person who wrote a Memorial Day tribute, and I think this is very auspicious for this day. Memorial Day is much more than a three-day weekend that marks the beginning of summer. To many people, especially the nation's thousands of veterans, this day, which has historically stretched back all the way to the Civil War, is an important reminder of those who died in the service of our country. The pages of our calendar, the chronicles of our lives, have brought us again to the most solemn of national observances, Memorial Day. Solemn because on this day, we honor the fallen from eight wars. This was written in 2000, and numerous other police actions and humanitarian deployments, one thinks perhaps of the nearly 3,000 Americans who lost their lives at Pearl Harbor, or thousands of others who fell at Yorktown, New Orleans, Buena Vista, Gettysburg, San Juan Hill, Normandy, Iwo Jima, Incheon, Saigon, or in Flanders Field. Today, 9/11, Afghanistan, Iraq, Syria, and domestic and foreign terrorism to this list. As the mother of an Army Major General and a retired Army Colonel, I can relate to this very easily. As we visit the sights around our beautiful country, let us remember these fallen soldiers. On similar visits, my mind is flooded with Arlington National Cemetery, the tomb of the unknown soldier, the flame marking the resting place of our late President John F. Kennedy, graves of Americans in the cemetery that are located at the heights of Omaha Beach, Normandy, standing in the twilight, helping to lay at rest my friends and neighbors. I had the opportunity to go to Case and Monk on Saturday afternoon and watch the tribute they made to Armed Forces Day and to Memorial Day. So, as the poetry goes on, these lines from victory show us that those who succeed us are duty of remembrance for those who fulfillment of duty left there remains scattered wherever national policy, personal honor, and a will to do right brought them to the end of their calendars. Thank you so much, and let us all remember Memorial Day.
We have next Gary Lee Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mayor Brophy and City Council. I'll try to abide by the cursing thing you talked about. On behalf of United Way, I would have written a proclamation, just don't have time, but we don't get a moment to really say thank you publicly to you all, and especially to the city staff, leader down, for all the great things, all the support that you all provide to our very small United Way. Case in point would be the Christmas parade, which has many whistles and bells, I think they say these days, and I remember years ago, we've been doing that for about five, two or three years ago, your police department, especially some people in town, decided to have a revival that we did not want to have, and it was a very calm, very well-done, in discretion, kind of helping those folks to have the revival somewhere else. And so, I appreciate every department, every employee. You know, the guys that pick up my nasty trash are waving to me and smiling. So I congratulate you all for that kind of thing, and I thank you on behalf, again, of Board of Directors for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Good evening.
Council lady, councilman, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I want to give you an update on the Lone Star Legislative Summit. Last week, the chamber announced that the Legislative Summit would be April 16th and 17th, I believe are the dates, 2020. So I wanted each of you to get it on your calendar today. We're going to ask the support of the city council, we're going to ask that you participate, we're going to ask that you attend, and it would be great if we had 100% attendance from our city commissioners. Just a bit of history, it was in August of 2006 that we dreamed up the Lone Star Legislative Summit. Historically, Lufka, Nacogdoches, and SFA have been going to Austin together in the odd-numbered and the even-numbered years, and it became aware to me, and I shared it with the Chamber Board, that we were not using our two greatest resources, our people and our money, going to Austin in an even-numbered year when the legislature's not there. And so, I came up with this idea, I shared it with the chamber, the leadership of the chamber accepted it, and that started the Lone Star Legislative Summit. Our first kickoff speaker was none other than Governor Rick Perry. Since that time, we've had great support from Senator Robert Nichols and State Representative Travis Clardy as the co-host, and last year, we had approximately 30 members of the Texas Legislature attend that function. We've had governors, lieutenant governors, many commissioners, and we expect that. What the theme of the Legislative Summit is, is bringing Austin and Washington to East Texas. And we've been a little light in the saddle when it comes to Washington. So I was in Washington last week, and I spent, I was with Senator Cornyn twice on Wednesday, Congressman Lance Gooden from Terrell, Texas, he's a freshman, he had previously been serving in the Texas Legislature, Dr. Brian Babin from Woodville, who's congressman, and Congressman Louie Gomer. And I asked each of the four, would you consider attending and supporting and speaking at the Legislative Summit? Every one of them said yes, and Lance Gooden, the freshman congressman, has already written me and said he's got his own calendar, gave me his cellphone number, and said, may I please come? And so, we want your support, and we're going to try to add the federal component to the Legislative Summit. Now, I have not discussed this with the Chamber Board, so I wanted to float the idea past you and had an opportunity this evening to come, and I'd just been in Washington, and I wanted to share it with you. We ask your support, and we'll be getting back with you and how you could support the Leg-Leg Summit. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Strong.
Mayor Brophy, other members of the city council, good evening. I'd like to read a letter which I have submitted to the Daily Sentinel in order to enter my thoughts into the public record. Most of the students and their parents have gone, it's much easier to drive in town these days, and we have a calm, if wet, summer ahead of us. There's still a dark cloud, however, hanging over our city, the problem of police intimidation. This came to the fore on April 10th, when a group of African-American university students, happily leaving a pool party, were accosted by an off-duty police officer who lost control and ended up throwing two young women to the ground. This event received national attention and resulted in a march on the police station and a demonstration before city council. Unfortunately, other equally intimidating police actions against other community members have taken place without this kind of attention. We must keep up the pressure to improve our criminal justice system and policing. The mayor and city manager have said that an investigation into the April 10th incident is underway, that must be quickly completed and made public. There have been several suggestions regarding an independent citizens review board to help improve police procedures. This must be addressed by the city council and implemented. If the police need more sensitivity training so they do not lose control in difficult situations, this should be provided as soon as possible. Our police must remember that their duty is to serve and protect everyone in Nacogdoches. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. Milton Moore.
Thank you, I'll make you a copy of my comments.
Thank you.
There are five comments, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for just a few moments of your time. Just a little situation I wanted to address tonight. I live on North Regay Street, in the North Regay Street area on Bostwick Street. A house at 3419 Regay Street changed ownership in November 2016, according to central appraisal district records. This is a single-family residential area. It appears that SFA students now occupy the house. Occasionally, a resident of the house will park in Regay Street sometimes all night. This results in a safety problem. Low-level street lighting, high-pressure sodium lighting, no sidewalks, there are no sidewalks on Regay Street. Lot of persons walk within the street, everyone has to walk within the street, jog within the street. SFA ROTC students in the fall of the year, in the darkness of, say, 6:00 in the morning when I go to exercise, it's dark, and they have maybe 20 or 30 young people jogging in the street. Late evenings also, and a lot of people don't have any reflective clothing on. It's, I've addressed this type of issue before when I lived on Pearl Street for 23 years, zoning violations, but I really didn't, haven't ever gotten any assistance with it. So in my conclusions, I'd like to just ask for your consideration, investigating a zoning violation at this residence that I pointed out to you. Consider no parking along Regay Street for safety purposes since there are no sidewalks. There's a 40-foot street width, and when people park in the street, and then people have to go around the vehicles when they're jogging, walking, so forth and so on, they're squeezed over, there's traffic, it's a dangerous situation. I contacted the police department, they told me that they are parked legal there. So what I'm asking is that it be looked into and see if some zoning, some parking restrictions can be, can be, can be, come about. And to consider a zoning requirement that requires owners of property to show proof of compliance with single-family requirements, rather than having the planning director to investigate the compliance of single-family zoning. In other words, have the owner of the property to verify that they are in compliance, rather than having a member of the city staff to go and investigate this. And I think that's been a problem, encountered this problem on Pearl Street, it was my understanding, it was too much trouble for the city staff to take care of this responsibility. And so I think if, maybe if the owner of the property is held responsible, then maybe we could, we could help eliminate this situation. And maybe a letter to local realtors that tell new owners in single-family areas to be advised of our zoning restrictions. I don't, I'm not sure that's done, but looking, bringing your attention to this problem now, I think might avert a similar problem that, you know, in our area. So I think attention to it would be advisable. And maybe if we have a timetable that we could, that I noted on there, that we have a timetable that you could give me for looking into this issue, you know, so we get back with me on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Okay, we will now move to agenda item three, items to be removed from the consent agenda and for the consent agenda. So if council wants to remove an item, and if not, chair would consider a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda as it stands.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Number five, we have a public hearing, consider ordinance of the city of Nacogdoches to allow a stone, sand, gravel, and mineral extraction, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Mantey, good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to present a specific use permit for stone, sand, and gravel extraction at a property located at 2722 Death Street. This case went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 17, 2018, and then it came to the city council on January 15, 2019. At another city council meeting, city council agreed that the applicant didn't have enough information to allow the council to make a decision. And so, the council requested that the applicant present an excavation plan showing how the excavation was going to be done to prevent any erosion or environmental hazard. And secondly, the applicant reassessed the proposal and submitted vegetation restoration plan that shows how the vegetation cover, including the top sill, will be restored back on the property. Since January, the applicant has been working with city staff from planning and engineering and has submitted those two requirements that the city council wanted. And so tonight, I believe it's in your pocket, and I have a bigger version if anybody, if council wants to have a look at it. So just to give a brief introduction, this is the location of the property, 2722 Death Street. It's, the bigger portion of it is vacant, and there's a single-family house in front of the, of this lot, just into the street. This is the zoning map, the zoning will stay the same, it's zone arg, and it's going to be for a specific use permit, and so it will not change the zoning of the property. The future land use calls for a little portion of the property to be commercial, and the rest was left vacant to allow for future users to determine what was going to be on site. And I have a picture here showing the sites. We didn't do any notification this time around. So basically, to go back to the case, at the city council meeting, planning staff did recommend that the city council vote against it due to lack of information, and the city council voted to table it to allow the applicant to present all the necessary information. Our city engineer has reviewed these two additions, excavation plan and a vegetation cover plan, and believes it's in line with what will help preserve the site and will prevent any erosion or any other problems in the future. And so, at this moment, city staff would allow the city council to make a decision on it, since you requested for those requirements. Planning decision still remains the same, like I gave the last time, but like I said, our city engineer has reviewed it and believes it's in line with what is required of what the city council wants. So I bring my presentation to an end, and I believe the applicant is here to explain more on the plan if the city council give him the chance.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this agenda item? Yes, come on up.
My name is Frank Adams, and I own property about 200 yards from the proposed dirt pit. And over the years, there's been massive amount of dirt removed from this dirt pit, as well as massive amounts moved next to, in the operation along Loop 224. I have no issues with another operation that will level off the 20-foot cliff. What a better place to have a dirt pit than next to the one that is currently operating. I am more concerned with other aspects that needs to be addressed within our city, such as unsecured houses in our city that are vacant, the apartments on Harris Street, next to the senior center, is only one example of many. For over two years, I've been requesting code enforcement to alleviate the problem that exists across the street from Fredonia Elementary. It is an eyesore and surely has code violations. When a person is thinking about moving to our city and drives by and sees this, I am sure that they would have second thoughts about enrolling a child in our school.
Mr. Adams?
So I think we have bigger fish to fry.
Okay. Anything else you want to add to this specific?
Oh, well, I just, I don't have a problem with it, and I've got property within 200 yards of it.
Okay.
All it's going to do is dig a hole.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, Vicki, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Lenow, I live on Cox Street, probably within a mile, just off it, I'm just behind ours, probably within a mile of the proposed zone. I have a couple of questions. I read the agenda at work late and raced over here. I thought I saw something about zoning change to heavy industrial, was I mistaken?
We can have them address your questions after you ask them, so we won't get into a...
Okay, so that is one question, I thought I saw that, and it may have been, I'm not sure where I saw it, but was it, was it, I just wanted to know if it had been...
No, we don't have any...
There's no zoning change at all, there's a heavy industrial next to it, and this is really a residential area. I didn't know that was heavy industrial zoning. When I bought my home, I just bought a home there a couple of years ago, and I planned to live there forever, well, however long forever is. And so that, that concerns me. What else concerns me, this is, this is the gateway to the lake, it's something that people see as they drive around the loop. Is there, you said that there was a remediation plan, but I'd like to know if it is a legally binding remediation plan that is signed by the city and by the excavation company.
We will, we will address that after everyone asks their questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Bradshaw.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I do have some, some information that was submitted as part of the supplemental information, and it somehow didn't get in the packet, so I just want to pass that out, that's okay. And it's only two-page, a two-page summary of the excavation grading and restoration plan. And in total, the supplemental information that was submitted is five pages, it's the two summary pages there, and then the three maps that show the existing conditions, then it shows, it shows the phases of the project, and then the final map shows the final ending conditions that we intend for the property to have. And really, just listening to the comments just now, I think they play right into what we're trying to do there. If you've driven by the loop, you've seen the cliff that exists. We think that we're going to be able to take this property and give it its highest and best use under the circumstances, and remediate that cliff, number one, and ultimately restore it back to, with vegetation or other things, and probably by the time the project is over, five to eight years, it'll be a nice commercial site for future development for the city. In the meantime, we're maintaining the residence, and, and, and so we are trying, we are thoughtful of the neighborhood, and we've talked with other neighbors and worked with them. And so, I'm here to answer, I guess, any questions, I don't think there's a whole lot of, you know, the information, once we put our plan together, really confirmed what we had already presented, but it's a much more definite plan that shows the steps along the way and the final elevations. And so, so we feel comfortable with our plan and are happy to answer any questions of the council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Last chance. Okay. Council, questions or comments for Mr. Mantey? Or Mr. Bradshaw?
Mr. Mantey, do you agree with the plan?
Yes, I, I do agree with it, and I'm happy the council made that decision on January 15 to request for extra information. I did discuss that with our city engineer, and it will address the element of erosion of vegetation that is in some years to come, but for now, it looks like it served the purpose for which it was required for.
The purpose, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm against the plan. I mean, while I'm against the site, removal of the trees, environment concern, and in my opinion, also health concern. I mean, this is another area that's going to be dust.
Sure.
And, I mean, I grew up next to Cottin Gin, and one of the issues that we still suffer from is dust that was in the air. We could only wash clothes and hang them on the line on a Saturday. But, and this to me is a health issue, and that's why, just my opinion, I'm not voting yes on this.
And then, those are some of the issues I brought up last year and the beginning of the year, but once again, this plan is supposed to take care of some of this situation, so.
You can't take care of summertime with wind blowing dust.
Yeah, that's true.
Anyone else?
I drove by, and I don't know if this is for you or for Mr. Bradshaw, but I went to the site, and it is, I mean, when you actually see the cliff, it's a lot bigger and it's a lot more impactful than, than how it sounds. So, to me, it seems like it's either excavated, or I think it's just going to stay the way it is and not have commercial use or opportunity for, for any other use for that land, is that, is that correct?
Yes, I, I agree on that, and that is the reason why, so, in that perspective, that is very true. But then, I think planning was also looking at its impact on the environment, that is why city council requested for the grading and vegetation cover to make sure that even though they are making their profits at the same time, it shouldn't have any adverse impact on the city. So it's very true.
And you do feel satisfied with the, with the response to the environmental impact concern?
Honestly, I, from my planning perspective, I don't think it addresses it in entirety, but it's better that the city council requested for this information. So to some extent, it deals with some of these issues. So it's better than it was when the applicant submitted his application on, in December. So it's a bigger improvement that I can work with.
What does it not address?
Once again, the issue of dust, the issue of the fact that, that street itself, it's, has a lot of residential uses on it, and I don't, I don't totally agree that having more excavation on site would, would not have, having more excavation on site would be okay for the residents on the street. But once again, just like you rightly said, if, if the site is not excavated, it might probably become, I don't want to use that word, useless, but probably have less use. And so, it's more of a 50/50 deal. So when the council requested for this extra information, it's something I could work with, but the issue of dust is something that will, would still not be addressed in this scenario, but it's better than it was when they actually submitted their initial application.
Is there no way to address the dust issue?
Can I, can I answer? I think there's, there's three things that address what you've brought up. Number one, if you look at the phase of the project, we're not, it's not as if we're going in there and clearing out seven acres of trees all at once, and it's going to be seven acres worth of sand to blow in everybody's yards. We're starting at the back, we're going to clear about an acre at a time, excavate that down to the levels, and of course, and we're going to move forward to the back of the property. And as we do that, of course, we'll replace veget, we're putting topsoil aside to then replace it, and then we'll re-vegetate as we come forward. So at, at any given point, theoretically, there shouldn't be more than an acre of sand to blow, number one. Number two, our, our dirt guys have water trucks, they're going to be out there, and they're going to keep that place watered down to make sure that doesn't happen, and of course, the city has the right to come out there at any time they want and inspect the property for that kind of thing. And I think the third thing, you know, and to put it simply, the question was asked, well, well, it sounds to me like we're just... well, well, it sounds to me like we're just moving the cliff over a couple hundred feet. Well, because of the lay of the land, that's true in a sense, but because of the requirements y'all have placed on our SUP, or, yeah, SUP, you know, there's a 10-foot offset from the eastern boundary, and then our slope has to be a three-to-one slope as it comes back to, to, on our property. So there won't be even a cliff at all. There'll be a gradual slope, and the highest level, based on our plan, it, it might be 10 feet above the, the, the lower slope, that'll be a good 60 feet away, if that makes sense.
Yes. One follow-up. The clearing an acre at a time, you said that the city can go out there at any time and review it and make sure that you are doing what you said that you would do. Is that enforceable? Like, is that something that, are there conditions in the special use permit that says we can pull the permit if that's not happening?
My, my understanding is that it is.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have anything?
No, that, that actually entered my question, was the, the ability to enforce.
Counsel never hands.
Yes, Mr. Bradshaw, I appreciate the, the effort and the intentional plan. That, that addressed my concerns from last time, and I completely agree, highest and best use for what's currently there, it's either a cliff or it's something good. And then we have a commercial property when we're done, which it is absolutely the gateway to the lake, so it'll be something fruitful. So I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, to address Ms. Lenell's question, which is a very good one earlier, and council member also, your question as well. I think there's actually, if we look at Chapter 118 of our Code of Ordinances, I think there's actually three areas of remedy if a developer or if a person, applicant that seeks and is granted, an SUP does not follow that. First, I think if we look at Section 118, maybe dash 174, there's actually a measure to revoke the permit. There could be notice given, a hearing, if those measures are not followed strictly, and there actually could be revocation. Also, further in Chapter 118, there are provisions for actually criminal enforcement, and then immediately following that is a section that provides for civil enforcement. So if an applicant is granted an SUP, and that applicant does not follow those conditions, those, those requirements placed on that SUP, we have not just one, but we have three different potential avenues for remedy if a person does not follow that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Any other questions? You know, everyone has a different vision for our future and the way our city's going to look, and I think that is really coming to the forefront with the advent of I-69 coming. And so this is begging for us to have discussions about how we want, what that vision is going to be for a city as a whole and what, what we are going to do. So having said that, I do appreciate, Mr. Bradshaw, you having, taking the care and going back and doing this and answering the concerns that we had. I know this is an investment opportunity, but it will continue to be an investment opportunity after you have finished doing this. So I would think that you've met everything that is required here, and as much as we don't like looking at sites like that, I, I think it's a perfectly good use for what we have now for that. So if there's no further discussion, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we pass it into item number five as it's written.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Agenda item number six is another public hearing, consider the ordinance amending the boundaries of the zoning district in the city of Nacogdoches, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, Mr. Manti, go ahead.
It's me again.
Yes.
So this is a rezon, let me pull up the map. As you can see on, on the screen, it's two properties that have different zoning. One of them is B1, and then one is a planned development. And the applicant plans to combine these lots and rezon them to B2 to ensure conformity. It's about 64-point, 64.5 acre, acre lots located just along the northeast loop, and the applicant plans to rezon this to B2 to allow for the development of medical offices. I have a picture here showing the area map. Right to the north, you can see it's right at the city limits. Developments along, around this property, we have a church, we have some apartments, and some rural developments outside the city limits. With looking at the proposed developments, being medical offices or uses related to medical, staff believes that the proposed use will not have any adverse impact on surrounding uses, considering the fact that the loop is a busy streets, or streets around the city, rezoning to B2 to allow for a medical office will be something beneficial to the area and probably lead to the, it will propel development along the, the loop and surrounding areas. So staff believes that the proposed use is in line with what the city would also want to see on there. Looking at the zoning map, it's on B1 and PD, so this rezoning would actually clean this and make it a, will, will make the property uniform with surrounding uses, which majority of them, as you can see on the screen, is B2. Staff believes that this B2 zoning will not be a spot zoning, it's a conform with surrounding B2 zoning, and is therefore in line with the zoning ordinance and will not have any adverse impact on surrounding zoning uses, zoning designation. Per the future land use map, the entire lot is zoned commercial, and therefore this rezoning is act, it's in line with the 2003 comprehensive plan. And I, within the 2003 comprehensive plan, it calls for the, to allow users of that nature along the loop, and so we believe this rezoning is perfectly in line with the 2003 comprehensive plan. With this, and our notification to properties within the 200 feet, I believe we had 11 property owners receive the letters. We had two responded in favor, and nobody responded in opposition. I have a picture here showing the side view of the property that extends all the way to the edge of the city limits. Picture showing the side from the west to the south, we have some, I believe, of the apartment, and then to the north, that's the city limits, and then to the east, we have the very beautiful church out there. Key points to note, the current zoning of the property can be considered a spot zoning since it's just a B1 within that area, and so rezoning to B2 would actually help to eliminate spot zoning and will, will ensure conformity in zoning in the area. The rezoning also is in line with the city's 2003 comprehensive plan, and will not have any adverse impact on surrounding uses. The P&amp;Z met and recommends that this, recommends to the city council to approve this rezoning request. Just to bring my presentation to an end, and I'll be willing to answer any questions you may have on this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Yes, Mr. Poole.
Mayor Brophy, council members, my name is Ed Poole with Charles Poole Real Estate, and I represent the owners, North Park Real Estate. That's a family-owned partnership that's owned this property for a number of years, and we found ourselves in a little precarious situation because initially, there was a subdivision plan created for this, this property. That's why the PD zoning exists. That was done sometime in the 1980s. In the late 90s, that, that plan was abandoned. So we ended up with basically empty zoning. A planned development without a plan is empty, and so it has no zoning at all. There is a planned medical office in Phase 1 adjacent to Calvary Baptist Church, and the B2 zoning would allow that to happen and development to begin in that corridor. The B1 zoning, I'm not sure where it came from. Everything to the west of this property, which is also owned by the same people, is on B2, and then across the loop to the south is also B2. So anyway, the, the owners of the property feel like that this is in the best interest of future development, and that obviously is a very good development corridor for us as a city. So any questions you might have? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Counsel, questions or comments?
No.
No? 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 Okay, then. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve item number six on agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second, that we approve Agenda item number six as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, consider awarding a contract for construction manager at risk for Zion Hill Baptist Church to Cox Contractors. Hello, how are you?
Mayor, Council, I'm well. How are y'all?
Doing well.
Back again to talk about this beautiful church. Today, I'm here for y'all to consider the construction manager at risk for the Zion Hill Baptist Church. A brief history of the building, I know the majority of y'all are familiar with it, but this is a 1914 African-American church that is the cornerstone of the Zion Hill National Registered District. It was used and loved by the congregation until the 80s, and they were unable to stay there because they'd grown so much, which is great for any church. And then after a lot of blood, sweat, tears, fundraisers by the Nacogdoches County Historic Foundation, the church was saved from essentially falling in on itself. They did an amazing amount of work outside the building, shored it up, replaced the roof, and did countless projects. In 2010, it was deeded to the city to finish the restoration and then to run it. In 2014, we, y'all approved a contract with Army Curtis for architecture services. He had the, the big task of doing a floor plan and a design that would meet all of our needs, but also that the building could handle and fit appropriately. And the next part of our plan is hopefully to bring on a construction manager at risk. A construction manager at risk is essentially a contractor that is brought in early in the project. A typical project is a design, bid, build, where you design everything, bid it out, and then you build it. This, we would bring in a construction manager early, so that way we can have more of a collaborative design process. Our construction manager at risk would be able to help us with cost estimating, streamlining the construction process, obtaining more accurate view of the structural issues in the building, and then with all of that done upfront, would hopefully help reduce some of the construction costs where possible. So we're essentially trying to make our little dream team, where we have a great architect, a construction manager, and city staff, that we're all looking out for different aspects of this building. When the project is finished, this building will have to essentially do three different functions. First and foremost, an African-American museum that will talk about the architecture of the building, the history of the congregation, the history of the historic district, and African-Americans in East Texas. Something that we think is sorely needed and really not, is addressed in limited capacity in some other museums, but this will be dedicated to that. It will also be a community center where we can have town hall meetings, we can have educational opportunities, research requests for archival research, we can have concerts, gospel choirs, anything there, and also an event venue that can be rented for baby showers, bridal showers, concerts, weddings, really whatever the community could need. And so all of that is, all of this is working towards that goal. To get a construction manager at risk is quite a lengthy process. We had to write for request proposals that I think capped out at 150 pages, I think Jeff helps with that a lot, to make sure that everything was being met as far as insurance requirements, previous work experience, and things like that. We advertised for a construction manager at risk from March 27th till April 18th. Let me do this next one. Our first advertisement was March 27th in Daily Sentinel. It was advertised again April 3rd. We had a mandatory pre-proposal meeting on April 11th, 2019. We made that meeting mandatory to make sure whoever was going to do a proposal for this building had a chance to come and talk to city staff, our architect, and then also go actually see the building. We wanted to make sure they understood the size, the scope, what state the building was in before anyone bid on anything. Cox Contractors and KDW, which is formerly Kingham, attended that meeting. We also had a deadline for questions, which we received no additional questions, and then our proposal submission deadline was April 18th, and we received one proposal from Cox Contractors. The proposal was reviewed by city staff and our architect, Army Curtis, and based on Cox's prior experience, their prior experience with this building in particular, they have a very impressive safety record, and also their current workload, our architect recommended that we accept their proposal. So we're very excited about that. Their proposal, it's a lot of very technical jargon, which I had to lean on our architect a little bit for, because he knows a lot of these terms, but their summary of their proposal, their proposed pre-construction fee is $0. The pre-construction fee covers things like the pre-planning, cost estimating, working on the last 10% of the construction drawings that we're working on. So they propose a $0 fee for that, which is wonderful. Their estimated general conditions will be around $50,000 to $70,000, which is an estimate, and that covers having onsite staff. You always see the trailers like at big construction jobs where they're kind of running an office there on the site to make it a little bit easier. So that's their estimate for general construction costs. Their construction manager fee is 2.75%, and that is 2.75% of all items bid during the restoration. And so that percentage is locked in there. If we spend, if we bid out a million dollars' worth of work, it's 2.75% of that. If it's 800,000, it's 2.75% of that. And so that's where that percentage is. And then their estimated proposal of construction days is 180 to 240 days. That clock does not start today. That's once we get the 10% of our plans finished. We send those to Texas Historic Commission for approval, and once everything is bid out, and we actually start out there with hammers and nails, we estimate 180 to 240 days. We're very excited about this partnership. We think that between Army Curtis, city staff, and Cox Contractors, we can come up with a great design plan that Texas Historic Commission will be happy with, city council hopefully will be happy with it, and the general public will as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Army Curtis is here as well, and then Brian Bray, who's our Director of Community Services and has been a part of this project for a very long time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Nope. Got some supporters from Zion Hill here.
We do. We have wonderful members of our Nacogdoches County Historic Foundation, our two co-presidents, Ms. Betty Shin, and Shami Decker out here, and Jeff Abb is here as well.
Yep.
So we have great support from the community.
Okay. Counsel, questions or comments?
What, what comes down to 8 to 10% seems like a pretty good deal, considering it's a pretty impressive makeover, not a new construction that's a lot easier.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the evidence coming to that.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anything? So when you say obtaining more structural aspects, is that the word that most of us that have ever bought an older home and worked on called big surprise?
Yes. We, Army Curtis, thank goodness, has kind of assessed what we want out of the building, what the building can really accommodate, but kind of the last 10%, there's a wall that's trying to twist, which it did 10, 20 years ago, and now that is kind of tried to twist and shift, it's probably going to continue, try to do that forever. And so it's really, there will be some strategic, I don't want to say demolition, because that sounds very scary, but looking under some layers of wall to make sure we can reinforce it the best way possible, and looking at what the structure really needs in certain problem areas we have right now.
Okay.
And once that 10% is finished, we'll have 100% plans that we can send to THC and send out for bids.
Well, having Army has really been helpful in this process.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you for your work. He's shaking his head.
He's done a wonderful job.
Okay, terrific. Well, so have you. So we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Agenda item number seven.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, that we award the contract for construction manager at risk for Zion Hill Baptist Church to Cox Contract, Cox Contractors. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. A lot of us have waited a long time to get started on this. Agenda item number eight, consider a resolution of the city council approving 2019 addition of the water conservation plan. Mr. Bartlet, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have tonight, want to kind of walk you through something we do every five years. And so our, last time we did this was in 2014, and this is about, if I can get the buttons right here, there we go. This is about a water conservation plan, and basically, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality requires us to do a bunch of statistical data of our water system, which you got in your packet, and it's just good nighttime reading if you can't sleep. And then a small narrative on water conservation, and we'll go through both components. I'm not going to recite all the technical numbers to you, obviously you've got that in, but basically, a water conservation plan is primarily composed of a lot of facts and figures for them that we turn in annually. Texas Water Development Board also has us do a similar study every five years for them, so a lot of these numbers go back and forth between these agencies. So again, basically, this is required by TCQ. So, again, basically this is required by TCQ, and it's a five-year update. So 2019 is our trigger for this. It's a summary of our customer data and how much water we've used and lost and what we've done with it. It's a summary of our water components. Have we added water wells? Are we still pumping from the lake in our case? So we go back through and give them all those numbers. We identify water conservation targets. We'll talk about that in just a second. We look at efforts to minimize water losses. We show our participation, in our case with regional planning groups, water planning groups, which is Regionia for us. And then we ultimately come to you, City Council, and they ask for a concurrence or acceptance. And what you've got in your packet, we formalize that with a resolution. So instead of just a motion, we'll actually ask you to pass a resolution, and that allows us to send that document to TCQ. So let's look at our performance, our report card. In 2014, our average use was 229.5 gallons per capita per day, which is their way we talk about targets. So you say, I don't use 229 and a half gallons per day. I probably don't use 29 gallons per day. So understand, this is a much more complicated formula, and it has to do with the total water we produce, the total water we see sold and used and lost, divided by a number of people, divided by capita. And so it is not an equation of how much you use as an individual, it's how much water we produce versus how many people we have. So that's the way we can look at overall conservation targets, because a lot of water is used in landscaping, a lot of water is used by commercial businesses, and certainly by us at home. So understand, that's the metric, is the gallons per capita per day is not just what you drink at the table at night. So we proposed last, in 2014, to have a five-year reduction down from that 229 figure to 220 gallons per capita, and that's almost a 10 gallon per capita reduction, which is a pretty significant goal. By our 10-year projection, which we hadn't gotten there yet, but down to 210 gallons per capita. So both of those were pretty aggressive. I'm pleased to report that our 2018 number, and understand we're in 2019, but our data through 2018 is what we report, is down to 206. So we not only met our goals, we exceeded them, and so that's, it's good to be able to present that to you. So let me tell you what our new goals are. So in this water conservation plan, we look at some, basically about four or five components that we do to deploy water conservation. That is a public education program. So back during the drought of record, and we spent a lot of time talking about water during the drought, we had a really good program of identifying water conservation techniques to citizens. We had all forms of media out there, and we really hammered it. After the drought went away and everything filled up, and right now it's filled up many more feet than that, as you know, we probably slacked off on that education program a little bit. So we have recommitted to doing those educations. It'll primarily be probably targeted now through more social media outlets, but we've committed to doing at least 12 a year. So we'll be working with Ms. Amy Mahaffey on those, that messaging, and try to get that pushed out to the public. We do think that has an effect. And a lot of this is just kind of a reminder. You know, we just kind of remind people periodically. So I think that will be, so we've increasing our frequency. We're going to continue supporting water-saving fixture installations. So if you go to Lowe's today to replace a faucet in your house or a toilet, what you now pretty much can only find are water-saving or water-reducing fixtures. And so we are not only promoting that, we're beginning to look at that as we review plans and talk to people. So we continue to promote that. So you use significantly less water from these faucets, showerheads, and toilets. And so that'll be part of our plan to continue. We'd like to reduce our water loss rate through line inspections, and we'll talk in just a second, but we lose a lot of water through leaks. And so oldest town in Texas is, you always heard me say, oldest water lines in Texas. So we have lots of leaks, and unfortunately, a lot of them are very indeterminate and hard to find. So we've got a drip right now at this joint and a drip at that joint, times, times 300 miles of water lines, it's a lot. So we have tried to identify those through line inspections. They're hard to find, but it's a constant and ongoing thing that we do literally every day, all day. And then also, in 2016, if I said that right, you passed a new water rate, new water rates. And it was a five-year plan of escalating rates. And so, quite honestly, escalating water rates helps promote water conservation. So the more expensive it is to use it, especially in a landscape format, the more conservative people become. So we've committed to that, and I will tell you, TCQ's last visit with, with us here commented on that escalating rate plan. Many citizens have commented on it as well, probably not with the same words. But, so they identified that we had a rate that encouraged water conservation, I think was, was the comment. Our 10-year targets are also very similar. We're going to continue public education, look at enforcement of water-saving fixture installations, and target water line repairs and replacement and leaking pipes. So we're, you know, what we've done obviously worked, we exceeded our goals, we're just going to try to focus and continue that. There's not a whole big, long list of things to do, and so we think this has encompassed for us what has been a successful way to do it. So we are looking, and I'm going to back up one second, I apologize. We're looking at an additional reduction of four gallons per capita per day. A little bit arbitrary, but we're hoping we can gain that with additional retrofit of these water-saving fixtures and additional location of some of our major leaking. And honestly, it's a little bit of a grab, but that's what we're going to try for. Our 10-year goal from 2018, so 2028, will be to have another five gallons per capita per day below that. I think we're going to be getting to what's really a bottom area of what we can do without, of course, some severe reductions in the way you and I use water. So we're going to continue to push this to the public and hopefully do a little better job. A part of this is a wholesale water conservation plan. We produce data for wholesale. It's a wholesale. We actually sell water to a number of different entities listed up there, D&amp;M, Woodland Hills, Melrose, Appleby, Lily Grove. Well, not all of them use water. A lot of those are emergency interconnects. So some of them, like Lily Grove, have not bought water from us in a number of years, but we're connected, so if they have an issue, they can do it. So we, basically what our water conservation plan says is, and by the way, you have to follow our water conservation plan. So it's no more complex than that. But we, Jeff Davis has helped us revamp our contract for these entities. And involved in that contract, it specifically outlines parameters where they must follow. So if we went into stage one or stage two water drought contingencies, for example, they would have to follow for everything that uses our water in their system. So that's really our plan for them, is you have to do what we do if we go into water conservation or drought mode. So what are our challenges to conservation? You say, Steve, can you do better than five or four? And that's, we'll certainly always try. But our challenges are, we really got an abundance of water here. I mean, we can, even during the drought, our groundwater barely changed. So we were able to pump from our wells just like normal. Of course, the lake went down 12 feet. And we all had a lot of scares and a lot of discussions about that, many, many council meetings about that. But we have an abundance of it, and so it's hard to preach conservation when you have a lot. Honestly, water's still cheap. So we price water in thousands of gallons, you know, cost per thousands, and it's really relatively cheap. So you're not necessarily motivated to be highly conservative when we price things like that. Good or bad, that's just the reality of it. And basically, again, our infrastructure, we have a lot of leaks and a lot of problems. So that's one of, actually our biggest challenge and probably some of our biggest losses, I think, come through leaks. Here's an example of two areas for, that you can whitewater raft on. The one on the left, unfortunately, is chlorinated. So the one on the left is a water leak. So when you think of a water leak, you see in the gutter of the street when you drive home and you call us and say, I think you have a leak, Steve. Some of the leaks look like this, where we have millions and millions of gallons. This happened in the middle of a pasture. Nobody saw it for a lot, for, you know, for a while. And we just reduced, had reduced pressures and things that finally clued us in where to look. The point is, these kind of losses really raise that gallons per capita per day number up. And so finding these, monitoring these, monitoring pressures, all part of what we're going to try to do a better job. So tonight, we're simply looking for you to adopt or approve a resolution that you have in your packet, identifying these water conservation plans and supporting them. And we'll run forward with them, or any changes you have to it for the next five years. Be happy to answer questions after, questions from the public.
Thank you. Any comment from the public that's here? Nope. Counsel, questions? Comments?
You know off the top of your head, rough, rough ballpark percentage of that which is sold versus produced? Just for rough leakage estimates?
All right, well, let me answer it this way. Our total losses from, could, could be somewhere between 15 and 17%.
Are there any kind of sensors with all the wonderful technology and automated report sending capacities?
Yes. We actually, at your meter, at your meter, we read your meter every hour. And so we have data, it's a good Big Brother thing, but we read your meter every hour. So the computer basically tracks that and has an algorithm to identify if your usage changes, which might indicate a leak. And so it basically notifies us, posts you on the list, and staff here then literally visit the site. We leave a door hanger or knock on the door and say, we think you may have a leak. I will tell you, that doesn't happen the first hour of your leak, because there's a process we're going through to get to you. But yes, we're actually monitoring it, and that automated meter reading system, AMR system, which again is radio control, we read it by radio signals, has helped us tremendously in reducing leaks on the customer side. So when you have a leak, we find it, we come notify you, and hopefully keep you from paying a massive bill and from wasting a bunch of water. On the distribution side of it, there's really no sensors other than our pressure monitoring and things go on. So we say, hey, we're 20 PSI lower out here on Durst Street or something than we were, and we begin to seek what caused that. Of course, these are all interconnected, Councilman, and so it's sometimes hard to hunt this out without some research. So anyway, I hope that answered your question.
Now, I had one of the city employees come out to my house and tell me I had a water leak. Of course, you know, after the argument, you know, I don't have a water leak. But unfortunately, it was under the house.
Oh, my.
And he helped me find that leak. So I know that part of the sensors work. But is this plan both commercial and residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is, would, is that going to be difficult with commercial part of it as to where monitoring and getting them to agree to the plan?
I, I think if you look at the stages, I mean, which we go from education, which we direct at commercial as well as residential. We look at leak detection, and we look at just helping them be better stewards of it. I, I don't think so. Our largest water users, honestly, are seriously big water users, which are the SFAs, the Pilgrim's Prides, people like that. They use a large amount of water. We have other industries that do, have been on board for quite a while, actually from the drought, and have made reductions. They use less water today. We sell less water today, which has become a financial discussion for us sometimes because of their water conservation, things that they've deployed. So I think by and large, the businesses are on board and understand this, and a lot of that, Councilman, is voluntary as well.
Yeah, just like pilgrims, you know, they have to use a certain amount of water.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if that's adjustable or not for their business. So that was the only reason. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? So Chair will entertain a motion for approving the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for conservation, water conservation plan, according to agenda item eight.
A second.
Moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And number nine, budget presentation on our general fund revenues. Mr. Jeffers, good evening.
Madam Mayor, good evening. City Council, this is the beginning of a process which has been going on since January. City staff has been working on building a proposed budget since that time. The city charter requires the city manager to submit the first draft of the budget to city council. We don't do that in a vacuum. We listen year-long. We also get citizen requests, and we have to weigh those against some very limited resources, especially in the general fund. This quick peek at major revenue accounts in the general fund shows that we're where we need to be. The only area which is down is franchise fees, which is a fee that the utilities pay for the use of city right-of-way, is Encore. Encore pays once a year, and typically, that check is over a million dollars. And so we're not concerned with the fact that that's at 19%, and we prefer that it be at 58%. You can't read this, but it's a 10-year revenue history, which you can look at in your leisure. But looking at the totals, general fund total revenues, you can see that we're around 25 million. But if you can look, you see some ups and downs, and that's because of what happens with the economy, that it's not always predictable. We tend to adjust the revenues to what we believe that they are actually going to be. We're very conservative in our approach, like on sales tax, for example, which we'll talk about in a minute. We don't guesstimate the maximum that it's going to generate. We, we give you a number that we're pretty confident that we're going to meet that and hopefully exceed it, which means that we don't have to have a crisis and numerous budget amendments. Property tax revenue is a very notable part of the general fund revenues. You can see that there has been steady growth. That's partly because of reappraisals, that's partly because of tax rate increases, and that's partly because of new construction. Where we would like to see more growth is in the area of new construction. There is a beast called the effective tax rate, which we'll go into greater detail at a later point. But simply put, if your appraised value goes up, then your tax rate should go down so that you generate the same number of dollars that you did the previous year, with the exception being new construction. It doesn't go into that formula, and so that's usually where you have the opportunity for the greatest growth in property tax revenues, other than a tax increase. Sales tax revenues, you know, they've been a roller coaster over the years. It looks like that we're on a upward trend, which we hope continues, because usually that's where we find the greatest potential for new growth. It's all a matter of getting people to buy their goods in town. One of the disadvantages that we have, we only collect 1% on the sales tax. Most cities in Texas collect a cent and a half for operational purposes. Then there's another half cent for economic development and, and other opportunities, including street maintenance. In our particular instance here, the hospital district receives one penny. So that's gone away, and so we don't have the opportunity to get those monies, which puts us in a little bit of hole when we compare ourselves to area cities. Also, when we go back and looking at appraised value as well as sales tax, what we do, a lot of people like to say, well, our taxes, sales tax, the total combination is much higher than what it is in another city. And simply put, that's not true. The way that you do those calculations is talk about tax effort per capita. So when you take into fact the consideration of our lower appraised values, and then the sales tax being a half cent less than what it is in most cities, then all of a sudden, you find out that our taxing effort per capita is competitive, and in most instances, lower than other cities. Franchise fee revenues, which we touched on earlier, you can see that there is a downward trend. Quite frankly, we think that is attributed primarily to natural gas. Natural gas has lowered the cost of producing electricity, and our franchise fees are based on the cost that you pay on your bill, which is set by us, but then the utility company passes it on. So even though it's a franchise fee on the utility, we end up paying it. But it's an important revenue source, and we think that we're going to continue to see some gradual declines in franchise fee revenues. Court fines, you can see about 10 years ago that they were in excess of a million dollars. Most of that is because of a backlog of citations, and the court has done a great job in clearing that backlog. And you can see that the number has dropped, and it pops up every now and then. But the biggest generator of court fines is traffic citations. We do have a traffic division, which does an excellent job. My favorite comment that we hear sometime from a citizen who unfortunately got a traffic citation... citation is they want to know why we're not out catching bad guys instead of writing citations. Well, the reality is, if you don't have an effective traffic division, property damage goes up from accidents, and unfortunately fatalities will go up. So when the city council instituted the traffic division several years ago, the police chief made a prediction that he put in black and white, and the traffic division has far exceeded that with the drop in property damage as well as the loss of life. So it's been a good thing, but we're going to see that court fines are still going to fluctuate significantly. Miscellaneous revenue, you can see a big bump in it for this year, and that's because of the reimbursement that we receive from NEDCO and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. That now goes into those miscellaneous revenue calculations, but also it's revenue neutral because we have the expenditure for those salaries in the NEDCO as well as the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Interfund transfer revenue is a topic of discussion. It's always a little interesting. In theory, there are various departments that are funded out of the general fund that should be partly funded by our enterprise funds, the utility fund, and the sanitation fund. You can do some pretty complex calculations. We do it the easy way, and we just simply say the city attorney's office. We divide it into thirds, and the general fund is reimbursed for two-thirds of the expense associated with the city attorney's office, the mayor and the council, the city manager's office, the finance division, city engineering, and the list goes on to where two-thirds is reimbursed. Now, those numbers have always been a little higher than what they should have been. There is nothing improper as far as a violation of state law with those numbers being higher. And here's the reality, if you want those numbers to drop, then you're going to have to increase the tax rate primarily, or you're going to have to cut services. And so while we have been sensitive to that issue for years, it's really difficult to chip away at it because of the strains that the general fund is under. But we'll have more discussion about this as we get more into the development of the budget. The property tax assessed value is a very important number. Those appraisals are done by our central appraisal district, which is an autonomous body. Mayor Brophy serves as the chairman. Maybe since there's a reappraisal going on right now, Mayor Brophy probably didn't care to be identified as the chairman. I got my notice the other day, and I didn't have warm fuzzy feelings as I read it, but I certainly understand it. And quite frankly, I can't argue about the reappraisal notice that I received on our home. But property tax values are driven by the school district, not our school district per se, but on the fact that the state has said with Robin Hood that all school districts should be equal. Well, we know that that's not true, and so there are some districts that money is taken away from, and they go to other districts. And until the state figures out that system, which I don't think that we're in any closer based on the current legislative session, you're still going to see some rapid growth of appraised values in metropolitan areas. In the rural areas, not so much. I want to emphasize to the council that this is a beginning of a process, which sometimes it's painful because there's too many numbers. What we're doing right now is giving you a very, a 30,000-foot view. And as we develop the budget, we have to have it in your hand in July, and so we have lots of work to do before then. But department heads have in their request, and finance department and my office are now going through those requests. And as we've said, there's way many more requests than what we have, the resources to fund. City council will be asked sooner rather than later, what do you want this process to look like? In the past, we provided these educational sessions, and the council, historically, different councils, has felt that that was easier to stomach than a day or two or three of work sessions. Last year, you had one work session, and I think the majority of the council appreciated that, but you might begin giving some thought to what you want that process to look like this year. Madam Mayor, I'll step away for any public comment, but be mindful that when the budget is actually developed and presented to the council and the public, then there will be at least two opportunities for the public to formally comment on specific proposals before the council's asked to consider adoption of the budget. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone here have a comment or a question about the presentation? Okay. Counsel, anything yet?
I have. Oh, go ahead. No. 10-year revenue history, it sort of bothers me somewhat. In 2009 and the difference between 2018 on just the property tax, sales tax, and franchise taxes, would you consider that slow growth?
It is slow growth.
And is that because of economic development?
It's the fact that we're in a rural area, that we're a poor county, that we have an untrained workforce, that we have high or rather low unemployment. We're probably as close as you can get to full employment. There are, there's not a single answer as to what the issue is, other than that we're not atypical when you look at rural areas in the state of Texas. When you consider that the city of Houston grows 100,000 population per year, that is a big economic engine. And then there are other metropolitan areas throughout the state that are growing significantly. And so the question is, is why can't we experience some of that growth instead of a very, it's not even modest, but, you know, 1% to 3% per year? That's not much growth. That doesn't really help with keeping up with expenses, inflation, the need for additional employees. But it is what it is. I think Jefferson was the one that was first quoted as saying that. But it's very, it's a difficult challenge, and there's not a single answer. It's multiple answers. But economic development is a very important part of that effort. And Larissa Philpott, your Economic Development Executive Director, is very well aware of that and is working on some strategies to try to grow economic development, hire paying jobs on a more rapid basis. But I think that the council is well aware that economic development is a very slow and painful process, and you're told no much more than you're told yes. And so we're going to continue to work on strategies to increase revenues. You know, I wish I could say that we're not going to be talking about a tax increase in a couple of months, but it's too soon to say. We are going to be talking soon about an increase in pay for city employees. And that's a point of frustration for me, and I know it is for the city council, is that when we have limited resources, it seems like the first thing that we cut, per the recommendation of the city manager, or as my little four-year-old, this is years and years ago, now she's 47, she called me the idiot manager when she was in a beauty contest. And sometimes I think that that is appropriate, but it's really difficult to find a clear path forward in taking care of our employees without putting a tremendous strain on our budget, because our employees are 75 percent of our total expenditures. So that seems to be the first thing that we set aside, but we can't afford to do that with us baby boomers retiring. There's not the same workforce behind the baby boomers, and we have an extremely difficult time recruiting and retaining positions all the way across the board. It's not just in the police department, which you've heard about an awful lot, that, well, we have a lot of turnover there. But I read an article recently provided by the chief where the city of Houston is going to be paying police officers that have a little bit of experience close to $100,000 a year. We can't compete with that. We're not going to be able to compete with that. And so we try to recruit and retain local talent, but as soon as they get certified, then all of a sudden, many of them are starting to look for jobs elsewhere unless they have community ties.
Yeah, now, you know, tax increase is not economic development, so.
Absolutely not.
Yeah. Oh, that was it for me. I just want to throw that last comment.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Just a couple of quick comments to address some misnumbers. I get questioned about this all the time. I love your metric on the tax effort per capita, because I get hammered on the tax as a percentage, so that's helpful. One thing I think people don't think about, I think about the traffic citations. I love getting them as much as everybody else does, never happens. But with the reduction in property damage, it also helps with the insurance rates. So we all get to participate in the upside there, so that's actually a great thing. And then one thing that I'd like a little bit of clarification on is the property tax. Legally, it's supposed to be, give or take, 5% of the market rates-ish. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. So there's not, it's not arbitrary and not a willy-nilly dartboard, so.
Right, no. And I'm not asking that my house be reappraised again, but I'm not within 5%. And I dare say that the vast majority of us, we're not there. If we look at what the appraised value is, would we sell our house for that? Probably not. But when we look at the taxes that we pay on that value, then it's too high. Perfectly understandable. I see Councilmember Bowden spinning here. But nobody likes to pay taxes, going back to the Boston Tea Party. It hasn't, it hasn't changed, and it's not going to change. And the worst part about a tax bill, you receive it lump sum, all at once, and here, pay, where in reality, there are a lot of services that we pay for, private sector. Cell phones is one of them, but you're probably paying more for your cell phone service than what you do in city property taxes. And you can go and you can click through some things that we pay a monthly bill, and that's okay. But if we had to pay taxes monthly, still not going to be very palatable, but probably not as distasteful as getting that one big bill once a year.
How often is property appraised?
Can I use the Jefferson answer and say it depends? There are computer programs that run all those metrics, and there are actually computer programs that make those adjustments. There are variables that are plugged into those programs that make those determinations. If you would really like to be put to sleep bored or decide that you don't want to do this anymore, we can ask Gary Woods to come and explain to you how all that works.
I like your answer. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Well, we are getting ready to go into executive session, so thank all of you for attending tonight. We appreciate you being here and your support. So it is now, what is it, 6:56? And we are going into executive session.